Thank you. Again, Rick Plon from Community Relations at MASTOOT is here this evening to talk about the MBTA and the Red Line stations and garage improvements. Rick, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council this evening. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight. Our presentation tonight is a culmination of a lot of hard work by the MBTA, a lot of partnerships with the City of Quincy and many others. It's a good news story. It's kind of a nice segue from Mayor Koch's presentation about investments in the City of Quincy. I'd like to ask you to key in on three important points that will come across in tonight's presentation. The first, the MBTA has made significant investments in the City of Quincy and Brantley. Investments totaling almost $1 billion over the past few years and going into the next few years as well. So taking in their totality, these projects will virtually create a new red line for the South Shore. And the third point I'd like to mention is that through community partnerships between the City of Quincy, the MBTA and others, we will provide more options for commuters and create transit-oriented development opportunities for the City of Quincy and the MBTA. This second slide shows the projects that we've been discussing tonight along with their associated costs and timelines. You can see one of the projects, the Winter Resiliency project, is complete. We'll get into the details of that and other projects around operations next. And so you can see clearly that total investment really suggests that this is a generational investment in the red line by the MBTA. So our agenda tonight is broken up into three portions. Operations projects, which will be led by our MBTA Chief of Operations Officer Jeff Garnville. Transit facility projects around the garage improvements, the Quincy Center Garage demolition, led by Project Managers John McCormick and Joe Cheever. And then to wrap things up, we'll talk about community partnerships with our Chief Strategy Officer Scott Bosworth. With the council's permission, I'd like to ask if it would be okay to hold your question until the end of the presentation? You've got quite a few slides to get through. If you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Jeff Garnville.
Good evening, council members and members of the council. As Rick said, thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to speak on some very important investments that we're going to be making on the red line and some of the infrastructure that's supporting the red line in this particular area. I'll be talking tonight about some of the investments that we're making in the actual operation of the system, the system that actually runs the MBTA. First off, we'll talk through Winter Resiliency, which is something that we've spoken a lot about in all of the media and in several of our MBTA board meetings. After the winter of 2015, and I think many of you are very much aware of what happened with the MBTA and the MBTA's red line, we came to a critical halt. Following that process, we knew that we needed to do some things differently. We knew that we needed to make our system and our infrastructure far more resilient. We knew we needed to invest in both railborne snowfighting equipment, invest in our vehicles to make them more resilient in inclement weather, as well as making some upgrades in our infrastructure to also make that more resilient. We've invested about $110 million in two phases of programs for Winter Resiliency. The program has spanned over the last two years. We have, as it relates from an infrastructure standpoint, replaced all of our third rail and any exposed areas from JFK South, so that both on the Ashmont and the Braintree branch. And for those that don't know, the third rail itself, that's what provides the electricity to all of our trains. And the third rail that we replaced was a smaller, more thermoconductive third rail that we believe is going to be far better and far more resilient to inclement conditions. In addition to that, we replaced third rail heaters, which that is the device that actually heats the third rail to prevent snow and ice from building up and freezing on the third rail itself, to ensure that we have good electrical connectivity between the trains themselves. And there was a number of other upgrades that went along with the program, as I mentioned, both vehicle upgrades as well as upgrades to the non-revenue fleet that is now available to us to clear snow from the tracks after we had a major storm. If we had any of those pieces of equipment of railborne snowfighting, we would have not had the issue frankly that we had in 2015 if it wasn't being available to us. In addition, something that we did with the Winter Resiliency program is we looked at our overall management and how we manage all of our storms and special events with the MBTA. We have new practices and new policies that are in place now to ensure that we are actively managing storms and events as they progress. The new red line trains are something that we are also equally excited about. The original contract was awarded to CRRC, they're one of the largest car manufacturers in the world. We were their first North American contractor. This is a project that is replacing our number one and number two fleets. For those of you that aren't aware, we have three fleets of vehicles on the red line. What we refer to as the number one cars, those went into service in 1979. The number two car fleet, which went into service in 1986. And lastly, the number three car fleet, which went into service around 1992. The original contract was to replace the number one and the number two cars, so one for one replacement. What we began doing and what we were working on over the last year is a study to evaluate whether it was warranted to do a midlife overhaul on the number, the 86 number three cars. Those vehicles themselves now are due for a major overhaul and due for a major rework. Ultimately, the decision was made by our board to award an additional contract to CRRC now for additional vehicles or replacing these 86 number three cars. Along with that, we're purchasing some additional cars to give us additional capacity on the red line. So this will give us now a total of 252 cars on the red line. Delivery of these vehicles is going to begin in 2019 and will be ended in 2024. These vehicles themselves are going to have a number of upgrades, upgrades in their propulsion system, upgrades in their braking system. They'll have a number of passenger amenities that will have them to be improved on the vehicles themselves. Wider doors, so our current doors on the red line cars now are about 48 inches wide. We're going to have a 64-inch wide door opening. And when I move into the next slide, I'll talk about why that is important. One of the things that we've been looking a lot at is what we can do to gain half capacity and half capacity on the red line. We know that we have capacity issues now, particularly on this branch heading northbound in the morning. We needed to do something and we needed to do something very quickly. The combination of the programs that I will be speaking about in this presentation, as well as some future programs that we're going to be doing, we're confident to lead to maybe a significant increase in capacity in the line. First off, as it relates to the 64-inch wide doors on these cars, as well as the passenger layouts, the layouts of the cars themselves, we believe that this will have a significant impact in the amount of time that people take to board and light off of all of our trains. And typically, in most transit systems, you want to see about a 45-second dwell time, that's the amount of time the train sits in the station before proceeds out. At the MBTA, we see an average of a minute to two minutes of time for each station during the peak and when trains hold in these stations. If we can get that dwell time down to about 45 seconds, we feel very confidently that that in itself can give us about a 10% to 15% increase in capacity on the line. In addition to that, with the vehicles and having one vehicle fleet now on the red line, we will have the ability to change the way our signal system is blocked along the lines. And what that essentially means is due to the upgrades of the vehicles and due to the way we set up our signal system, we will have the opportunity to run our trains faster for longer. So at the completion of this particular program and the delivery of the last vehicles here, we expect that we're going to be able to increase our headways down to about three minutes between lanes. For those that don't know, we typically average on a good day about five minutes between trains in the core. So that, in addition to that, we know that that'll give us about a 50% increase in train capacity per hour, which is significant and is something that we're really excited about here at the team. Another project that's underway right now that is certainly not as glamorous as new vehicles is the Truction Power Substation Program. It's about a $20 million investment that is underway right now. The project itself is about 60% complete. And we have five Truction Power Substations that run along the Braintree branch up to JFK. Each of those Truction Power Substations are essentially responsible for taking AC power, converting that to DC power, and that's what we use to power all of our trains. This upgrade now will obviously make our systems far more modernized and also far more reliable. Signal system upgrade. We currently operate on the red line a fixed block system. It is an analog system that was developed and designed and placed into, in service in the 1970s here at the authority. The system now is in need of replacing and is in need of upgrading. So we're going to be investing about $200 million into our signal system on the red line. This will give us the ability to, as I was speaking about earlier, change and make some modifications to the signal system itself. Obviously, the components will be upgraded with new modern components and will give us the capacity and ability to get to that three-minute headway that I had discussed earlier. This project is going to be running in parallel with our new car deliveries and we anticipate this project to be done in about June of 2023. It's also important to note that many of the delays that we see on the line right now are due to signal failures that our signal maintainers have to keep going every single day. So from a system reliability standpoint, this is another project that we know will have a significant impact to our customers and their riding experience at the MBTA. One of the, before I move forward, I think what I'd like to do is also just introduce the team that's going to be getting up, first John McCormick and then Joe Cheever, who will be talking through some of the investments that we're going to make into our parking facilities, our facilities along the digital lines. After that, Mr. Bosworth will be getting up and be talking about some of the community relations and some of the community partnerships that we're going to be doing with this particular project as we go forward, because all of these projects are happening along the same timetable, along the same project. That's something we're really excited about and certainly, as Rick mentioned, we're happy to answer any questions upon this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council. Appreciate it. My name is John McCormick, a project manager for the MBTA, capital delivery project. As Jeff mentioned, I'd like to introduce you tonight to parking garage projects, state of repair projects you guys have. I'm going to start with Braintree if that feels okay. Quincy was once a part of Braintree. Our Braintree station is a $31 million project. It's a, we're going to renovate it, make it accessible by adding two elevators, bring it to a basic state of good repair. That's two structural repairs, replacement of existing systems, and the addition of two elevators. We're looking at a stack construction in the summer of 2017, and the construction duration for the garage renovation is approximately 23 months. As I mentioned before, we're looking at $31 million for a project construction cost. Just the scope of Braintree is a rendering that shows basically the, you've got an elevators and stairway, it gives a stairway. The canopy you see crossing the busway is a pedestrian bridge that is deficient and will be demolished and replaced by that canopy. Braintree, we're going to increase the parking spaces, improve traffic circulation, we're going to replace all the signs in the garages, we're going to replace all the systems such as fire protection and fire alarm, we're going to add security channels, some demolition of a stairway and making other stairways compliant, structural repairs at the garage. And just to mention that we have just about completed an urgent structural repair contract at both Braintree and Quincy Adams. All the lighting in both garages will be replaced and replacement parking is going to be across the street from Braintree parking garage in the landfill. The town of Braintree is working with us to turn that into a temporary lot. Personally, I'm in good spots now. All right, now coming into Quincy, Quincy Adams Garage. It's our second largest garage on our system, United Yale Wife on the other end of the red line. Same thing with Quincy Adams, we want to rehab it to bring it into a state of good repair. That needs a 40-year lifetime, life horizon, I call it. We want to replace all the systems and in about 20 years, all the systems will need selective replacement. And with that selective replacement in about 20 years, we'll get another 20 on top of that, so that gives us the 40-year time. Same thing, Quincy Adams and Braintree are part of one contract, saw the show of the ride repairs, and that will start this summer. And Quincy Adams will take on it, it's 39 months. It's already accessible, we'll be adding spaces and we'll be adding a lot more accessible spaces also. The value of Quincy Adams construction is estimated at $42 million. This is just going over the scope of specifically of Quincy Adams, shows a shot inside of the atrium. The atrium will be turned into part of the pop-up pickup area. Right now, it's under the garage, supposed to the tracks, but we've prepared it to be the atrium area for now. There's one more garage I want to talk about, and it's right there, right next to us, Quincy Center Garage demolition. We'll be taking that down starting this summer. It's going to be part of the Wallston Station improvements project. It's all from level five down to level two. When we move, we'll leave level two with a fender on it and get it ready for the development that is to come over the station. The notice to proceed is in the summer of 2017, that's the same as Wallston, we're looking at a duration of 18 months. A lot of that work will have to be looked at closely because it's a performance spec, so the design of the demolition will be done by the contractor. And so there'll be a review period, intensive review period of that. And the construction value of Quincy Center demo was about $25 million. We intend to keep the station open during the demo and that's it. All right, now after we finish the demo, we just got a little grant for the City of Quincy, the amount of $4.2 million. That's to get the, what we'll be replacing, the first part will be a new bus facility. Buses will, this is one of the busiest bus stations on the South Shore. There's 15 bus routes here. We'd like to, this new bus facility will bring him in off of the parkway and remove him from the Hancock Street side and open up the Hancock Street side for development in the future. And that's going to be through the developer over the areas. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Joe Cheever, for Wallston Station.
Thanks, John. Again, my name is Joe Cheever, project manager from the MBTA. Madam President, the city council events are having us here tonight. So we're going to continue on up the red line here to the Wallston Station improvements project. Been working on this project, spending design for a number of years. I know a lot of public movements out there to try to give as much information from the community as we could and incorporate that into the design, which I'm about to walk through. So Wallston Station's the last one on the red line, it's not accessible, and we need to make that happen. That's goal number one in this project. It's, it's got a few codes. When we go in there, we make this accessible, which means elevators. We also need to make it code compliant, we need to bring it to a state of good repair. And when we do a project like this and include all those components, we're also going to modernize the station. So we call this a full station upgrade. This is, this is through to us, A to Z, we're going to make this a modern, a modern, accessible station. There's also quite a bit of site work that we're going to do, site and utility work. I'm sure you know there's several utilities that go under the station. We're going to improve a lot of those city utilities, bring them up to a state of good repair, make sure that they're going to be just as enduring as the station itself. So like I said, in order to accomplish all these things, we're doing a full station upgrade. From the existing station to the proposed is going to look significantly different. One of the key components is that existing lobby that you see under the tracks, existing today, will remain. That's an important pass-through to connect the two wards in the city on each side of the tracks. So it was really important to us, you know, in meeting with the community and in awards, at one point, we looked at several different options as a way to, one of the key components of this is to add a means of egress off the platform on the north end. And we could have done that in several different ways. And what we come up with is a bridge over the tracks, so it's a total of three elevators, one in the existing lobby that brings you up to the tracks, or you can go up and over the bridge, which has two elevators associated with that. So what it does is it takes that existing lobby and expands it significantly so that we have a nice, a nice warm space. It's going to be something that you walk into and it's going to be kind of like a government center for you, okay? That's what I'm, what's, what we're trying to do is you walk in there and it's really eye-popping. It's something that you really want to feel good going to every day. You walk down into the existing lobby up to the tracks, or you can go up and over the bridge. You have some options and it's going to be, it's going to be really a good endurance station for a long time. And that was something that we worked with the community on, right? So at one point, we had looked at, maybe we don't, maybe we don't keep the pass-through. And we went out to the community with several community means, we were able to get that, get that back in there. And now you're going to continue to be able to, without having to go through the fair gates is what I mean. So you don't have to go through the fair gates in order to get from one side of the tracks to the other. So we've opened that up again and we're able to, made that work. So I think it's a great station design that we have now, we worked hard to get there, and now we have to build it. So we have worked very hard since we got to 100% design, looking at a lot of different ways to try to build the station. Taking into account first and foremost, safety, construction safety is so important to us, but also the safety of the passengers and the safety of, the safety of our, of our contracting. So also customer experience. So when you think about going to the station every day as it is today, and then going to the station every day while it's under construction, two very different things, and we have to take that into account. So we looked at, I want to say at least six different ways to, to attack this hard station to build. One of the key elements is that it's 14 feet above the existing parking lot, it's a center platform station, so it's really hard to get to the platform from, you know, if you're, if you're trying to construct it or deconstruct the existing platform, the existing, the existing concrete canopy. And so with those challenges, in the six different ways we looked at doing this, what our approach is going to be is to, is to do a station closure during construction. And what that means is that we, we can actually reduce the total duration of the project. That's the amount of time the station is actually under construction is less, which like I said, from a customer experience perspective, is hopefully something that they would value. It's also 25% less cost, and it's, and it's really important to know that it's a lot of less temporary construction. So what you have to do when you try to keep the station open is you extend the platform to the north, or you extend the platform itself, or you do some sort of pilot barriers to get folks on and off the train. So all those things go away with closing the station during construction. We had a lot of success in doing this at Science Park a few years ago, a six-month station closure. Orient Heights up in East Boston was an eight-month station closure, and then Government Center was a two-month station closure. Just like with Government Center, when we open the station, it's fully code compliant, fully, we would call substantially complete. You walk in there and the station is totally complete after that closure, which is what we're going to accomplish here. So what does that mean? That means when the station's closed, customers can't board or quit on and off the train there at Wallston, but the trains continue to go through. And what we're going to set up is a, is a temporary bus service that will run from Wallston to North Quincy. Customers can still go to Wallston, there'll be two bus stops, one on the Woodbine side, right on Woodbine Avenue, and another bus stop on Newport Avenue. That way, we're accommodating both sides of the tracks there, and we'll run a bus service from Wallston up to North Quincy. Again, those bus shelters, they'll have bus shelters, we're going to have lighting, we're going to have snow removal, we're going to make sure those customers are accommodated and brought up to, to North Quincy. So again, it's a really exciting project, we're going to get this, this inverig station up and built, and I think we've come up, come up with an approach here to attack this project as quickly as we can. Like I said, the, the station with Quincy Center demolition, Quincy Center Garage demolition is going to go up a bit and we're going to have notice to proceed this summer, and we'll get, get this project going very soon. So that said, I'm going to hand it over to Scott Bosworth, our Chief Strategy Officer.
Yes, yeah, you do.
President, you, members of the council, thank you very much. Playing cleanup tonight, I'll try and go very quickly as I wrap up, so if you have any questions, I'm sure you have a bunch. So I'm going to focus moving up the line up to North Quincy. By this time, I'm sure you're very well versed in the project in North Quincy, the development project by our partner, Bezudo Corporation, Bezudo Group and Atlantic Development. We're really excited about this project, we're excited about working with the City of Quincy as we have for the last few years been about. As you all know, it's about a $200 million project, it's in right on 600, and housing convinced to the North Quincy parking lot. There's great public benefits to the project, including a very solid tax base of about $1.6 million a year, which will certainly help the capital investment plan that the mayor spoke of earlier. After construction, we will have one-for-one parking, there'll be 852 spots available for our commuters, which is great. It is, what's really important is our commuters and your citizens that use the station will have now direct access into the station from the garage. There'll be an electronic payment system, there'll be parking availability technology in the station, so we have much more robust passenger experience. You probably know the schedule better than I do, but our understanding of where the contractor is at this point is that construction of the garage is about to begin in January of 2018. We're expecting it to be a less than a year project, and the contractor will, the developer and contractors will work together to try and limit that as much as possible. And during this time, though, there will be some parking interruptions. The left-hand side of the lot or the south side of the lot will be construction zone. We are working with the contractor and will continue to work with the contractor to limit the amount of spaces that are out of commission during that time, but there will be spots maybe offline. So as a result, unfortunately for people, perhaps, if you have in front of you the next slide, show some of the parking areas that we are bringing into. We entered a process, next slide, we entered a process with your, one of your vibrant employers here in town, Granite Telecommunications, to try a, a parking solution that would benefit both of us after a few months. Unfortunately for us, the success of Granite Telecommunications, it just didn't work out. They could not afford to have their parking lot down for the construction of a, jointly paid for parking facility for the Spirit of Time, which we, and that's a success story and unfortunately for both of us because it was a deep public partnership. So we ventured a process to, to find spots to mitigate. The first priority is onsite. So we believe that with the existing parking lot, we would work with some engineers to redesign what will remain there. Work, as I mentioned, work with the contractor and its developer to limit the amount of spots that are available. There is a partner working with the city, we look to initiate Boulevard, we, MBTA actually owns up for quite a while, seeing if it's possible to park along the side of that road, initiate Boulevard as we go forward. But that may, may not be enough. So we're reaching out into the community as we speak to look for partnerships. You mentioned in the slide here, we're looking at some of the parking complexes in the area to see if they could do a daytime sharing arrangement with us. Hopefully, a lot of these facilities, people gone during the day, we may be able to work with a partnership. Doing the same with the employers down at Heritage Drive, you see, obviously it's State Street and Granite, we're really thriving down there, so it may be difficult. We're hoping that we might be able to find a, a solution down there. We may even contemplate, I think it was the suggestion of Senator Keith Presser-Stad, about maybe even letting the high school charge for some parking during the summer month on its lot, let them beat revenue. months from its lot and let them be revenue, do something fun with it with the kids. So we're looking at all kinds of things. And then we do know, we do know at the end of the day, we will have DCR lot on this one point. That will be there and that will be our plan D. But it will be there and ultimately, that's what we need to do to replicate the spots and make sure we have it for our passing pure constituents. We will do that. But in order to do that, we're going to need to, we're working with the city in our delegation. We've worked on a series of mitigation amenities that we're building into our program or projects here that we feel will be helpful. One of them is the continuation of Commendiate Boulevard. Most of you all probably are familiar with it, you can see up here, right by Boston Scientific, it actually comes to an end. Working with the city and the prodding of the city, the mayor and his staff, we have agreed to fund a two-point-one-million-dollar project to connect that to the DCR lot, which is back here, which ultimately, as you know, has seasonal water transportation. So we will continue our efforts with the city to get the contract in place to do that and the permits and all of the required permissions for us to go forward. And as soon as we can get that up and running, we will. Additionally, we're quite aware of the traffic law on Wallston Beach Boulevard and the mayor and his staff requested of us, along with the state delegation, asked us to consider a tool that worked very well, the bridge was under, the pontiff's bridge was under construction, which is having a morning rush hour police officer there to direct traffic. The detail down there has worked very well in the past and we have agreed to have a detailed in-spot down there during the construction period in Wallston, the Wallston garage, which is the longest of all the projects in the program of projects that we're talking about. Ferry service, obviously, we have a seasonal service that hopefully will be getting up to Marine Ferry soon, we do have a dock issue down there now, but we, our partners at DCR understand, are working on that with you and your staff and the mayor's staff. But we are committed to working with the city to help make sure that runs again this season, to the point where we, the secretary colleague has offered to subsidize part of that along with Winthrop. You will know as long as nobody from Winthrop is watching. That commitment is, as long as the schedule works, it's important that the schedule works for you, your constituents. So we have continued to work with Maureen Eri, and she continues to work with Winthrop and the operator to make sure that it works. Additionally, on water transportation, we are committed to doing a study, a long-term study of the permanent water transportation in Quincy. This is a, there was some confusion on this, this is a study that is being done for Quincy, not all of the other harbor towns along the way. So we're excited about it and we're excited about continuing to work with Frank Tremontosi, who I understand had surgery and we missed him, but he has been very, very good to work with. Maureen, Jim Fatsis, Chris Walker have all been excellent to work with through this process as we continue to plan these investments and ultimately bring them on board. I did, before I wrap up here, I do want to mention, we have two people from, that have been working very hard. Beth Larkin is our deputy general manager of capital delivery here, Herman Stapp worked very, very hard on this. Janelle Chan is our chief of real estate for the MBTA. Paul Allen is in the chief operating officer's, chief operating officer's office and is very, very helpful in keeping us organized and moving forward. I can't, wrapping up here, we have a very robust planning, plan to reach out to the community, to get one-on-one with the community. This is the beginning of a process, it will be ongoing before construction, during construction, it'll be on the ground, and it'll be successful. We will continue to brief you all, our legislative delegation, we've met a few times in the P and S bars together, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, because you're a supporter and you're going to be watching us very, very carefully through this process. And as I wrapped up, the mayor has been absolutely terrific. He has been a terrific partner in this, an absolutely terrific partner, who has been a tenacious, tenacious fighter for the people of Quincy, making sure that these projects, although they break, there is an impact and we work hard, we need the staff to make sure that we, we make it as painless as possible. So as I wrap up, hopefully we're giving you a sense of the excitement that we at mass.mbta have for this program of projects for the red line. We, together with you and the citizens of Matt Conwell, we're going to be delivering a brand-new red line, virtually a brand-new red line, and it will be great. And we thank you very much, we thank you for the community partnership with Quincy, and we are hoping for questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. Yes, one.